All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, the time is now 1:07 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education regular meeting of August 11th, 2020 is called to order. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are. There are three individuals that have indicated that they want to address the board, and we see them in the waiting in the lobby, so Mike Flamini will admit them. I will read the rules for public comment. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of the time. We'll be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Welcome caller, please state your name and city before you provide your comments, and then also if you're representing a group. And I will let you know when you have used up your three minutes. Mike, can you let the first caller in, please?
On the way, it says admitting, one second.
Hello caller, are you on the line?
Yes.
If you can please state your name, where you're from, and if you're representing a group, and then begin providing your comments. I'll let you know when your three minutes are up. Thanks for calling in.
Okay, are you ready for me to start?
I am.
Okay, hi, I'm Kathy Lester, a library media specialist at East Middle School and from the Canton Schools, and a board member, past president of the Michigan Association for Media and Education. MAME wants to thank the Michigan Department of Education for including us on the teams that developed the Learning at a Distance Guidance Document and the Summer Learning Guidance Document. School Library Media Specialists were very busy during this past Learning at a Distance. A MAME survey of its members found school librarians were delivering instruction, including digital citizenship lessons, promoting reading, engaging learners in literacy development, providing learning resources and innovative technology support to students, family, educators, and administrators, providing professional development to educators on distance learning tools, supporting equity of access to our students, providing copyright guidance, and more. Thank you to the board for the thought and work that went into the updated top 10 strategic plan. I believe school library media specialists can support the vision, mission, and guiding principles of the MDA strategic plan, and MAME looks forward to working with MDE towards the outlined goals. In particular, school library media specialists empower all members of the learning community to become critical thinkers, enthusiastic readers, skillful researchers, innovative creators, empathetic global citizens, and ethical users of information. The school library is a welcoming place where all learners are valued and find support and resources for both academic and personal growth. Studies and data show that when a certified library media specialist teaches and collaborates within their school community, students have higher reading and writing achievement, higher ACT scores, higher graduation rates, better information literacy skills, and higher rates of success in college. Studies also show that students who are economically disadvantaged, Black, Hispanic, or have disabilities benefit proportionally more than general students from the presence of a full-time certified library media specialist. I would like to highlight that school libraries have been leaders in the maker movement, which gives students the opportunity to be creative, to learn design thinking, and to practice problem-solving skills. Since the 2014 State Board of Education statement supporting access for all students in Michigan to properly staffed school libraries and the inclusion of the appropriately staffed school librarians in the original top 10 intent goals and strategies, there's been very slow but steady increases in the staffing of school libraries in our state. Access to certified school librarians is called for in the Schoolwide Essential Literacy Practices and the School Finance Research Collaborative Report. In addition, equity of access to certified is supported by a number of associations in our state. I believe to maintain the positive momentum, we need to keep media specialists in some way in the new strategic plan. Thank you very much for your capitation and supporting education for all students in Michigan.
Thank you. And do we have the next caller, Mike? Hello, do we have a caller on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. If you can state your name and where you're from, and if you're representing a group, I will start the timer, and you can offer your comments. So thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you. My name is Tom Mayer, that's spelled M-A-I-R. I'm calling from Traverse City, and I've been watching your meetings. And the reason I'm calling is because of the great interest in back-to-school, or back-to-schooling of some kind. And I'm on the ballot in the November election. I'm running for the Board of Education, so I'm hoping to join your group. So I don't represent any other groups. And I have been elected. I was elected as a county commissioner in 16, and I served in 17 and 18 here in Grand Traverse County, representing most of Traverse City, including the entire downtown area. So, and I had worked for the federal government. I worked for the U.S. Department of Transportation in a special group, which was a post-9/11 counterterrorism group, actually. So that was pretty fascinating. Reminds me of today, you know, that we had to come up with many new methods quickly to try to get back to some kind of normalcy, as they say. But I should tell you that today, the intermediate school district here, the Traverse Bay Intermediate School District, had their board meeting, and I made a similar call to announce that I'm running. And last night was the TCAPS, or the Traverse City area public schools. And I've been attending their meetings, and I know some of their board members, and I'm quite familiar with everything that's going on. I'm originally from the Southfield Public Schools. I went K through 12 in Southfield, so I'm a product of the public schools, and I support them. I support public schools over private schools, actually. So whether it's the intermediate school districts or the other public school districts, I am really interested, and I really want everybody to have a great education. I had taken polls several years on the day, April 15th, that people pay their taxes, and they used to do that by mail more than they do now, but I would hold this thing called a penny poll in front of the post office. People would be able to put 10 pennies in a jar, and they were all labeled for different parts of the federal budget, and this was a pretty good cross-section, not scientific, but a good cross-section. And the two things that always came up first are just as important today as they were then, and that's health and education. So that's my position. I think many, many more federal dollars should be going to education today, and also to help. And our health and education systems need more funding. When the government has a stimulus bill, a very large portion of it should be for just those things, and not so much corporate aid. So I'm more on the side of the people than the corporation, and I'm definitely on the side of public education. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hear the little bell, that's a nice bell.
Thanks for calling in.
Okay, and thank you very much, and I'll be following up by listening to your recorded meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I believe we have one more caller. Caller, I'm getting some feedback, is there something on in the background? If you could turn that off?
Yeah, I will, as soon as I can, to the speaker before me.
Okay. Great.
It's off now, is there any fine now?
The sound is just great now, so if you could please state your name, where you're from, and if you're representing a group, and then I will let you know when your three minutes are up. Thanks for calling in.
Thanks so very much for calling in. There must be a delay in what I'm seeing on my computer versus what I'm, what has actually happened live. I'm still hearing you talk to Mr. Mayer. My name is Fomna Poncy, I am from the city of Detroit. Good afternoon, Superintendent Rice and other members of the board. Congratulations for Teacher of the Year, Dono, and special thanks to Vice President Pugh for inviting me to address the stage. My name is, again, Fomna Poncy, I'm a degree mechanical engineer with Building Vitals, a local building health consulting firm, and I'm also a member of ASHRAE, the American Society of heat, refrigerating, and air conditioning. I serve as the chair of the Government Affairs Committee for ASHRAE, a great chapter. ASHRAE is a global professional society, we've got 190 chapters, 130 countries, committed to serving humanity by advancing the arts and sciences of heating, ventilating, conditioning, refrigeration, and their allied skills. Some of the work that we do includes writing standards of care for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of commercial buildings, including schools. Several of the standards we write are adopted in whole or incorporated in part into many federal and state building codes, including Michigan's current energy, building, and mechanical codes. In short, we are the subject matter experts on building HVAC systems. Right now, the $64,000 question, and if it's in mind, is what about COVID? How do I reopen my building? How do I protect my occupants as I resume in-person teaching? Numerous research studies have shown over the years that building HVAC systems, the indoor environments they help to create, have a profound impact on the performance and productivity of building occupants, teachers, and administrators. Whether we're in a pandemic or not, properly operating and maintaining HVAC equipment and systems is essential to our ability to provide a high-quality environment for our students to learn in. Under current pandemic conditions, certain changes to the way we operate building HVAC systems can help reduce the airborne dissemination of infectious pathogens. In particular, enhanced ventilation and filtration provided by HVAC systems can help reduce the risk of transmission by reducing concentrations of pathogens, including the pathogens that causes COVID-19. Changes to system operations are not as simple as pushing a button or swapping out of cell phone. HVAC equipment is part of an integrated system of various accessory pieces that has been selected or specially designed to work the COVID-19 unit. When changes are made, one part of the system... I just want to finish a little bit, impacts experienced by other parts of the system. Additional information, I want to make you aware that there are 1,000 members of ASHRAE in the state of Michigan, and we are here and available to assist you in providing guidance for reopening your facilities. If you have questions, please feel free to email us at covid19@ashray.org, or you can visit the Detroit chapter of ASHRAE, right, www.ashray.org. Or you can contact me, Fomna, F-O-M-N-Y-A dot Poncy, O-U-N-C-Y, at gmail dot com. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for providing comment. Dr. Rice, that concludes public comment, I have no more public participants.
Thank you, Marilyn, and thank you to our public speakers this afternoon for providing public comment. Our next topic is Michigan's federal special education determination and our progress on the path forward. This presentation will be led by Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnect, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, and Ms. Terry Rink, Director of Special Education. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required. Gentle people, good afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you for the opportunity to share some good news with the board this afternoon regarding our most recent determination. A quick note, Terry is not joining me this afternoon, her and her team are finalizing some much-needed guidance that will be going to the field shortly, so I will be doing the presentation by myself this afternoon. So pull this up and confirm that everybody can see the main slide? Everybody good with the main slide?
Yes.
Okay. So again, the idea for the presentation this afternoon is to give you an update on what we call the Path Forward, which is a strategic action plan around special education system delivery in the state of Michigan. And I presented a number of times to the board on this particular issue, but wanted to give you an update based upon our most recent determination. So what you have in front of you on the screen is a historical look of the past three years regarding our determination from the federal government. If you recall, in 2018, the summer of 2018, we received a determination from the federal government that said our system delivery for special education was in need of intervention. And again, I presented the information to you, explained how they look at 50% of compliance indicators, 50% of results indicators, the numbers are before you, and we scored a 59.17. And that was really alarming. More importantly, it was a call to action. Again, I presented multiple times, you know that we pulled a large group together, a steering committee. We also then had those steering committee members nominate work group members, and we began a tremendous amount of work around this issue in order to improve those systems. Fast forward to last summer, and we saw some growth. We scored a 65.48. We increased our compliance slightly, and then increased our results slightly as well. That put us back into what, again, the federal government determines is the needs assistance category. And we continued to work. And you fast forward to this past late June, early July, we received our determination score and are pleased to share that that is once again increased to 72.5%. On the compliance side, we are nearly 100% compliance, and on the result side, we continue to make progress, though there's still a lot of work yet to do. In terms of the scores themselves, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. Again, you've seen this both in a presentation, you also have it in writing, but there is a rubric associated...
Dr. Kennick-Schnect, we are seeing simply the title slide, we are not seeing the individual slides rolling forward.
Let me go back and reload, my apologies. Let me try something different and see if... Are you now seeing the rubric slide?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to go one up and just recap quickly. Here are the three scores that I just recapped, everybody seeing that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So again, I won't go over what I just shared, but you can see the growth from 2018 to 2020, you can see the growth on the compliance side and on the result side. So now back to rubric. So this is the rubric that accompanied the 18, 19 results indicators and what the scores had to be in order to earn the points. I'm not going to go back and forth, but I did want to include it in case after the presentation you wanted to see what it took to score a one and what it took to score a two. This is the rubric for 2020, the rubric changed for 2020, so I wanted to share that as well, that the 18, 19 rubrics were different or are different than 2020. All of the information is there. Again, I'm not going to spend time toggling back and forth, but I wanted to include it in case you had an interest when we were finished. I do want to spend a little bit of time taking a look at the indicators themselves on the result side, and then the scores by year. So if you remember, the federal government looks at reading, which is on this slide, and math, which will be on the following slide, and these are the indicators that they look at when they are measuring progress. So percentage of fourth grade students with disabilities participating in regular statewide assessments, this isn't about any score on the assessment, just how many are participating in the fourth grade, how many are participating in the eighth grade. And what you can see in 2018 are the percentages, you can see the scores. In 2019, percentages and scores, 2020, percentages and scores. And so you can see that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each one of these slots, but want to highlight some. You can see growth in the areas. Another indicator they look at is percentage of fourth grade students with disabilities scoring at basic or above on the NAEP. So this is performance, and you will see some growth between 2019 and 2020 regarding reading at the fourth grade level for students with disabilities. This is percentage of students participating in the NAEP, again, you can see growth. This is percentage of students in eighth grade with disabilities scoring basic or above, and then percentage of eighth grade students actually participating. So this is a longitudinal look at not only the percentages, but the points that were earned. This next slide is second verse same as the first, except math, so I will not go through all of them, they're the very same indicators, but it's regarding math, and it's the same concept. Here's your percentage, there's your score, and you can simply follow along from left to right to see the growth, both in performance and in score. The final results indicators that they look at are graduation dropout rate. We have a great amount of work to do in this area. The good thing is we're heading in the right direction. You can see that the graduation rate for students with disabilities is increasing, and the dropout rate is decreasing. So though we weren't able to score points based upon the federal government's formula, we are moving the needle in the right direction around both of those issues as well. So that's a look at all three of the past years and where we've been and where we are. A little bit about the initiative itself, I'm not going to talk a lot about this because you've heard about it a number of times again over the past couple of years, but we have a vision regarding the path forward for our students with disabilities, and we also believe we have a responsibility to put this vision into action, and that's what we've been doing. If you can recall, the process really involved the steering committee beginning with the end in mind. If we were to create an effective special education delivery system in the state of Michigan, what would that look like? And these indicators rose to the top in terms of what that would look like, these 10 indicators. And based upon that, we said we've got to act on them and bring these indicators in what we call into actuality, which is what we have been doing. The indicators then were lumped into eight groups. Again, this should look familiar to you, I presented on this before, but we are committed to improving instruction and inclusive learning environments, to developing multiple pathways to graduation, to really enhancing the personal curriculum, and bringing a greater awareness around that, I believe we are moving the needle on that. I'm taking a look at how we certify our educators. Again, I believe we're looking at that as well. What type of professional learning supports are we providing to our paraprofessionals or teachers, our bus drivers, our principals when we're working with our students with disabilities, how we look at and utilize data around our students, what we do around M-Step and NAEP communication. In the final piece in the eight domains was funding, and again, those should sound familiar to you. How do we know if we're going to be successful? It's basically a measurable increase or a measurable decrease in the key indicators, and we are seeing these. We are seeing a measurable increase in M-Step participation, we are seeing a measurable increase in NAEP performance and participation, we are seeing an increase in graduation rates, and we're seeing a decrease in dropout rates. And this was how the work was phased out, how it was chunked out in Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. Obviously, COVID has provided some very unique challenges to making some of these initiatives happen. Fortunately, we were able to have a lot of momentum going into COVID in March around these particular issues. We have an all-ED network partnership with MAISA and with MACE. We are taking a look at alternative diplomas. We had done a lot of work at the department, cross-department work around the personal curriculum, in sharing information with local school districts. And just prior to COVID, I was able to convene many of the major state associations, MEA, AFT, the principals, the superintendents, the ISTs, and many others, to really start to plan around how can we provide coordinated and aligned professional development around these particular issues. And that meeting took place in late February, and we know what happened in mid-March. So we were able to start the conversation, but obviously, given COVID, this has slowed a bit. But we're still committed to the work, we're seeing progress, we're pleased with the progress, we know we have a lot of work yet to do, but wanted to share that information with the board and certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Dr. Kennick-Schnect or comments associated with his presentation? Dr. Albridge?
Thank you. So it's great to see the numbers moving in the right direction, and congratulations on all the hard work that you guys have done to get to this point. I just had one quick question on the slide that talks about education versus dropout. I know that sometimes the word dropout doesn't really mean what we know it sounds like it means, so can you define in this context what dropping out means?
That's a complicated question, one that we really grappled with as we were doing the work. It's very complicated, it's not what you would consider a traditional dropout, or may consider a traditional dropout. It is, what we found is that when a student drops out of school in Michigan, in MSDS, which is the reporting mechanism that districts use to report, there are, I believe, six or seven different opportunities for a district to report why the student dropped out. And what we found is, in that year, there was about 6,000 students who had dropped out, half of them were coded as unknown. And you may remember this conversation, which was troublesome to us, because what does unknown mean? You know, the students don't vaporize, they have to go somewhere, and maybe they dropped out for a month and then re-enrolled at another school district. You know, maybe they dropped out and moved to another state, and that record review didn't catch up yet. So that's one of the pieces that we really want to, if you remember on that professional development slide, that we want to work with the pupil accounting folks to really try to provide them some training and information to try to better define what that dropout means. So that's what we found through the process.
Thank you. Dr. Albridge, follow-up?
So just to be clear, you know, in some cases, we, if a student doesn't graduate within a certain time period, we call them a dropout, even though technically they've never dropped out of anything. Is that the case here, or is this just, they have, we've, they've stopped attending a school, and we're not quite sure where they went from there?
Yeah, that's not the case here. There are some questions that we do have around our 22 to 26-year-old population, but in terms of the dropout, being calculated as a dropout, it is what you had said, it's a student that leaves a school district. Our question is, did they go somewhere else, what type of record keeping is associated with that? Other states, you know, we looked at Minnesota, and they have 12 reportable indicators for districts to submit to the department in terms of why the student dropped out. Now that may not prohibit the student from dropping out, but what it really provides is some qualitative data for us as to the why, so then what can we do as a state department, or what can local districts do to provide more and better supports for our kids so they don't drop out? But yeah, that's what it is. Now, the 22 to 26 question, that was interesting for us, because we have completers, and so we are working with the federal government right now, we're the only state that does 22 to 26. And so how that factors into our graduation rate, we're still in conversations with them regarding that.
We're the only state that does 22 to 26?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. Dr. Pew?
I just didn't want to miss this opportunity to, you know, acknowledge that we are heading in the right direction. I know that we have more work to go, but I definitely hear the commitment of the team to get us there, so I just wanted to give kudos to you and the team, as well as the Department of Dr. Rice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Michelle, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I couldn't see this, I'm having trouble with my teams, and I couldn't see the display that you did, Scott, so I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I know there was a tremendous amount of work that you did to, and others, many others, Terry Chapman for one, but the whole department and the special area, and many stakeholders. So I want to just commend you for your work on this and improving this. I also just wanted to say, as a mother who had a child go through the 18 through 26-year-old program, how really important that is to families in our state, that we have that support. You know, so, and I'm grateful for it, I'm grateful that the, our state offers... I'm grateful that the our state offers it and and to so many families that that really need it. So I also, you know, in the in the past, I my hope is that even, you know, we're looking at the compliance standard that are set to us by the federal government. But I would also, and I know you feel this way, want to expand and improve outcomes for kids with special, you know, special needs or special ed students because we know their for many categories of students, their unemployment rates are astronomical, their opportunities to participate in the community are are limited, especially in Metro Detroit with our terrible mass transportation system. But so anyway, I just I wanted to thank you for all that work. I was glad I could be a part of it. And 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 I just hope I'm hoping in the future there can be even more advancement on the metrics that we think are important. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Vecto. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I'd like to first commend you and the staff and all of the individuals in the state who are taking this report seriously. And clearly, we're moving in the right direction. Just a point of clarification, and I know we understand that, but in case the public is misunderstanding that, on a couple of your charts, you had test results and test participation from 2020, which is not those tests were not taken in 2020. I just wanted that kind of clarified in public that those would have been delayed results, which would have been the case anyways. But I just didn't want anyone confused on the fact that, you know, wait a minute, I thought we didn't take standardized assessments this spring, which we didn't, so.
Yes, thank you, Judy. And that's I was gonna to conclude with that. To Judy's point, when we look at M-Step participation in the 2020 determination, that's really the 2019 school year M-Step participation. So I have an email into the the Office Director of Special Ed at the federal government, to your point, inquiring about next year's determinations. What is that going to look like? Because obviously, we did not administer a state assessment. Many other states didn't either. And so what is that going to do to the federal determination process? I'm waiting to hear back. But yes, that those 19 that the 2020 determinations are are based upon 2019 participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, Dr. Kenick Schneck. Other other reflections, comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. Sorry.
Okay, very good. It's Snyder.
But unfortunately, I can't see, maybe you can't see it. I'm having difficulties today. I've been booted off multiple times, so sorry about that. Scott, I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation. It's sort of a theme that we need to continue to carry and move forward, the idea of celebrating every success, however small or large. And so I feel like the the presentation focuses on that, and that's good because that's what that's what we need to hear. Knowing that it's it's sort of based on pre-pandemic circumstance, and I'm probably going to sound like a broken record in the coming months, which is fine with me, I feel like we need to make sure that we're not taking our eye off the ball so that we can retain that success and build upon it. Determination being a central topic that we need to continue to go back to. I wonder how many students don't necessarily fit in the category of at risk or even, you know, the creative sort of relatively successful in just about any arena type of students. There's just such a large number of students in the middle there that may not have been determined or had an IEP previous to the pandemic, but were sitting on a fence or possibly should have actually had one. And that doesn't include the students that are at risk as a result of a pandemic. So I'm wondering how we are going to tailor our goals for a strategic plan during this time for kids with that may not have established disabilities but do have educational needs in this environment or did have them, we just didn't identify them and weren't really honoring the need that they had before, which does happen. I know it's a negative statement that we don't all like to sometimes hear, but it's a reality. So celebrate the success. How can we transfer that success to a time such as this?
I'm not sure if you're looking for a response or if that was just a comment, but my response would be COVID is going to obviously be extremely challenging. Obviously, to your point, these determinations are pre-COVID. We know that the the pandemic is only going to make things more difficult, not only for our students who are currently diagnosed, as you refer to, but also to students who may have been in the in the pipeline to be diagnosed or that will be diagnosed post-COVID. It's undoubtedly going to pose a tremendous challenge.
What are some? I mean, you know, as as parents, right? We often say, okay, what let's brainstorm and think in advance. You know, I'm sitting here thinking, how can parents be empowered to get tutors or have access to tutoring for their kid that's learning remotely in this environment? So there are different universities around the state. There's care.com. You know, Governor Whitmer had created a platform, if you will, for frontline workers that were trying to access childcare when they were continuing to go to work. So, you know, trying to be very laser focused in this respect, just to address the here and now, knowing that later is coming. What can we do to get local school districts some form of structure to provide for these kids the best we can is my thought process. And, you know, if we have if we have a network of caregivers that we really encourage frontline workers to engage in, do we have a network of educational people that might not be returning to work on some level and and they're really at risk, but they could be definitely a resource to a family in need, if you will? So is there a way to really streamline that as soon as possible for families to engage in?
You know, currently at the state level, we don't have a system like that in place, if I'm understanding what you're asking or or explaining in terms of connecting families to perhaps retired educators or educators who aren't returning to work. We don't have a system like that in place. At the local level, I'm not sure how or if local school districts are 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 going down that road or are providing that service. We do, to your point, on the childcare front, we do on the childcare front have been able to to work with the governor's office and others in terms of of making sure that folks have quality childcare as they return. But that's different than obviously a a a teacher that may be going into a home.
Sure, right. And if you think about it, a tutor, an educational support, a teacher, that person could potentially really walk by someone, even if it's an hour a couple of times a week. And I know this sounds pretty like minute, but, you know, again, we we were able to create such a concept when it came to childcare in those early months. I think we can do that now with educational supports for families and kids that need it, again, that might not have been identified or determined, which would help minimize the gap that is growing. So just I throw it out there passionately.
Other, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Ms. Vecto?
Okay, thanks. So kind of picking up on what Nikki was saying, I know that post-pandemic, there 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 is going to be a the a why, I think, an incredible gap and loss, you know, for special number of special ed students, particularly those who, you know, working on a computer, that kind of thing is just not cutting it, you know? It's, you know, they need certain kinds of therapies or they're just not able to attend to being on a computer for prolonged periods of time. And, you know, I've I've heard that there are some some that want to go to hold the state harmless so that or not necessarily our state, but any state harmless for the loss for these children so that no further funding or money would be necessary or to try to bring them where they should be. And I would urge against that and instead look for, you know, proactive ways to find and start thinking about that now. What can be done? What investment can the state make in these families and these children, understanding that they're going to be especially vulnerable and especially losing and 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 these sorts of things? So, you know, I understand that we're it's a difficult situation and what can be done right now, given, you know, how contagious the the COVID is and one-on-one is so difficult. I think we should not look for just wiping the slate clean and not providing these children and their families, these students and their families, some sort of extra support and services when as soon as we can.
Yeah, I would concur. And and the most recent guidance document that we put out in in late June, early July got to that effect, Michelle, is we really encourage districts to look into what we call recovery services to work with parents, to your point, in families and take a look at the needs of the student, where the student's at, what they didn't receive perhaps, and provide, again, what we are calling recovery services. And that's a method that that's a method that many other states are also are encouraging as well.
That's great. So this would circumvent like, because I was told at one point that if a parent wanted services, they would have to actually file a complaint against the school, say the school somehow did something wrong. And the schools aren't doing anything wrong. They just it's just impossible to do what's needed. So I'm I'm hoping to that it's an approach that won't be adversarial, that won't have to be a complaint against the school that you don't necessarily feel has been, you know, a bad actor. You just feel the 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 state as a whole and the the school system as a whole should be acknowledging and addressing the the extra loss that these students have experienced. So so there is there is it would this be a way to circumvent or to get services without having to file any sort of complaint?
Yeah, I wouldn't use the term circumvent because, as you know, a parent can file a state complaint at any time. And so that's always their right. But to your point, the guidance that we released is exactly what you talked about. We 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 were encouraging districts to be proactive, to be collaborative, to reach out to parents. And again, have a conversation about what we're calling recovery services, which are different than compensatory services, which come, to your point, after a special education complaint. So we're not trying to circumvent. We're trying to encourage districts to be proactive and collaborative and really address this upfront, perhaps.
Is there any additional state funding or is that going to be just on the school district's general, you know, general funds to to do that?
There are no additional funds appropriated by our state legislature at this time to to provide these. Districts can use CARES dollars to provide recovery services. And as you know, those are the federal dollars that we received.
Okay, great. I I would encourage that hopefully the legislature would people in the legislature would care about this issue and address it in the next round for the for budgets. But thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vecto. Ms. Snyder, a question?
Yes, I'm just curious. Has the process changed in terms of requesting an IEP or 504 for families? Is that something that they can still engage in during the pandemic?
Yes, it hasn't changed, and our guidance has has addressed those issues. We can still, I say, we local districts can still hold virtual IEPs, and and there are still ways to to start and finish that process. So that has not changed.
Okay.
Other other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Hearing and seeing none. Dr. Kennicks Connect, thank you very much. Congratulations on the good work. And I will communicate that directly with Ms. Rink when we speak later this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that we are working on getting our professor with us. You could just hold for one quick moment. And in the interim, President Albridge, why don't we move to why don't we move to a vote on the meeting minutes while we're while we're waiting? Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee, the whole meeting of June 9th, 2020? I've got a motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Marilyn?
Yes. Vecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini? Ramos Montini? Thank you. Snyder?
Yeah.
Tilly is saying yes. Albridge?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. 8-0, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Let's move to the report of the president. President Albridge, do you have a report for us?
Oh, it will be very, very brief. I just wanted to highlight, first of all, I hope everyone had a wonderful summer. Well, as best as we can under these trying times. And welcome back. Special welcome to our new Michigan Teacher of the Year and a special departing words for our former soon to be former Michigan Teacher of the Year, who did a fantastic job this year, and we really appreciate her all the work that she did. And I just wanted to highlight the fact that I believe this is the week that school districts are required to provide their fall plans, which we're about to have a conversation about. Just wanted to to mention just how much work our local school boards and the educators and the parents and the taxpayers and community members have have engaged in over the last six weeks, coming up with these plans, very difficult decisions and different across the board. Some of them are going remote learning, at least for the interim thesis. Others are doing face-to-face. Others are doing some blended. And and unfortunately, no matter what the decision is, there's going to be people who are very unhappy about it, and there will be people who are very happy about it. But out of both necessity and commitment, our local districts and our educators and our parents and others are making very tough decisions. And I just want to say how much I and I believe the board and MDE appreciate the work that they've done over the last six weeks.
Thank you, President Albridge. We do have Professor Strunk here. Let me share a brief introduction for her presentation. Our next presentation is being done by Dr. Catherine Strunk, Director of the Education Policy Innovation Collaborative at Michigan State University. She's here to share her findings, both on an analysis of continuity of learning plans from the spring and the teacher and principal survey results from the spring. So these are foundational elements that have helped our local school districts reflect upon the work that they are doing in the summer and the fall to serve children in the next school year. Dr. Strunk, welcome. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rice. Can everybody hear me since I'm sort of calling in separately?
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, thank you for inviting me to speak with you all today. I appreciate it. As I believe you all know, EPIC at MSU is an independent, nonpartisan research center that we operate as the strategic partner to Michigan, Michigan Department of Education. And as Dr. Rice said, we'll be sharing with you some of our findings about Michigan School District's initial plan to continue educating students in the spring of 2020 and principals and teachers' perceptions of this instruction schooling and the impact of COVID on students during that time. Thank you, Mark, for being willing to advance my slides for me, and I can go to the next one. So in this presentation, I'm going to address three main research questions. I should say that both of the reports that this presentation are based on are on our website, and at the end I'll provide the link, but they're just on Epic Ed Policy's website so you can get them yourself. We will talk about what what plans did school districts put into place for finishing the 2019-20 school year after the suspension of face-to-face instruction? How did principals and teachers respond to the transition to distance learning? And how might the pandemic and associated suspension of face-to-face instruction have differential impact on different groups of students? Next slide, please, Mark. Next slide, please, Mark. To begin to answer these questions, we collected a lot of data. We want to thank MDE and our other partners from across the state for helping us do this. We coded all 813 continuity of learning plans that were provided to MDE in the spring. As you all know, Executive Order 202035 and 65 required plans to describe 14 elements of operations. We coded for all of them, including the motive instruction, monitoring student learning, maintaining relationships with students and ensuring access to learning for all students. We also, again, did a survey of about 9,000 educators, K through eight teachers and principals in May through June of 2020. We focused on K-8 because we tacked this survey on to the already existing survey in the field that worked to study the Read by Grade 3 laws implementation. So we don't have high schools in this picture here for the surveys, but we know that other folks across the state have done a similar survey for high school students. We merged these data to the longitudinal data set from SEPI and MDE to look at how things differed across sector, locale of district and student demographic composition in terms of proportion of kids who are economically disadvantaged or from underrepresented minority groups and average student achievement in the district. And we also looked at the USNSC data in the terms of the proportion of households with broadband internet subscriptions in a given district. Next slide, please, Mark. Here's a little bit more on our survey sample. As I said, we had about 9,000 responses from K through, K through eight educators from about 90% of Michigan school districts. This map shows you where they are. So you can see that they are a good representation across the whole state. We have response rates of about 16% for eligible teachers and 12% for principals. This is lower than we would normally like, but we think that there are extenuating circumstances this spring. So we understand why we had such low response rates. The survey sample is representative of Michigan's educators. We have, but there are a few differences or slightly more proportions of respondents who are female, who are hired in the last five years, who are elementary certified or endorsed in ELA. Next slide, please. I want to start with a couple of caveats before I jump into the data. We coded districts' initial continuity of learning plans. We were not able to code any kind of final plan that they might have produced after April, nor the actual implementation of those plans. We know that districts learned and evolved a lot as the semester unfolded and they probably implemented things that were not in their initial plans. We couldn't code for that. In addition, survey responses are always limited by the questions we can ask and who answers them and when they answer them. So we wanted to keep the survey purposely short so that we didn't overburden teachers and principals. So we couldn't ask everything. We would always welcome feedback from you and we always ask MDE and they've been wonderful in providing us feedback to help us understand what else we might want to ask in future iterations. So we will continue to work with MDE to understand instruction and learning during the pandemic as we go back to school. Next slide, please, Mark. I'm going to just start with something that I think is not going to be surprising to any of us. When we asked teachers and principals about what they were concerned about in terms of the impact of COVID-19, they expressed deep concern about the ways in which suspension of face-to-face instruction would impact students' learning and wellbeing. This graph has a lot going on. So the panel on your left shows teachers' responses and the panel on your right shows principals' responses. The X-axis at the bottom shows the proportion of educators who responded that they were not at all concerned, somewhat concerned, concerned, or extremely concerned with gray indicating non-response. For each set of educator, teachers and principals, we centered the X-axis at zero, showing to the right the proportion of educators who are concerned or extremely concerned in green and dark blue and to the left proportion of educators who are only somewhat or not at all concerned in teal and purple. You can see the extent of concern by the size of the combined green and dark blue bars to the right of the center line on each panel. And each bar represents an item we asked in our survey of educators. So to what extent they were concerned about each of these things. For both teachers and principals, you can see that the far majority of educators were concerned about students missing instructional time, students returning to school behind in literacy and other content areas, the long-term economic impact on students, students missing crucial services and supports, and supporting students through their grief and trauma. They were also worried about how to maintain and build relationships with students and barriers preventing students from accessing remote learning and literacy learning, as well as how to adapt curriculum for at-home remote learning. Fewer educators were concerned for themselves relative to their students, although still nearly 60% of teachers and principals worried about the long-term economic impacts for themselves. And the majority were concerned about barriers that might prevent them from providing instruction remotely. Next slide, please, Mark. When we look at how districts planned to provide instruction in the spring of 2020, we see that the far majority, approximately 80%, planned on providing primarily virtual or hybrid instruction. We defined hybrid as those districts that had plans that discussed using both virtual and hard copy resources to educate their students. Only 11% of districts planned to use primarily hard copy media and a small proportion outlined plans to vary instructional modality by grade level. Next slide. So here I slipped the graph on its side so we can examine districts' primary mode of instruction by the proportion of their population that had broadband internet access. This is the same data as we saw on the last slide in the top bar. And then the second through the bottom bar showed the distribution of planned instructional modality for districts with low, medium, and high levels of broadband access. We see that districts, that the planned use of virtual instruction varies by broadband internet access. So districts and communities with low levels of connectivity were less likely to plan to offer virtual or hybrid instruction, whereas those in communities with higher levels of connectivity plan to rely more on virtual or hybrid instruction. Next slide, please. I don't show it here for time, but our survey results make very clear that teachers and principals believe that better internet access and to devices for students would be helpful. So this graph shows that the far majority of districts in their plan plan to provide electronic devices and internet access to at least some students. The top panel shows the proportion of plans that say they will provide students with electronic devices and the bottom is the same for internet access. The green bar shows the plans that said they would do so for every student and the blue bars indicate for at least some students. And you see this again varies across districts. So here we show that urban districts were the most likely to plan to offer at least some students devices and internet access. And rural districts were less likely to do so. It seems a little counterintuitive. And similarly counterintuitively, the right panel shows that districts with the highest community broadband access were the most likely to plan to offer devices and internet access. Next slide, please. We asked teachers to tell us about some of the challenges that they faced in transitioning to distance learning and instruction. Teachers reported substantial challenges with technology and virtual instruction. Over three-quarters of teachers said that consistent internet access for students was a challenge to a moderate or to a great extent. And nearly three-quarters of teachers also expressed that facilitating student participation in virtual class activities and a lack of technology training for students were challenges. They also felt that facilitating student-to-student interaction in a virtual class setting was hard, as was the lack of available technology for students and a lack of technology training for remote learning tools. Next slide, please. One of the most frequent challenges expressed by teachers was keeping their students engaged in their schoolwork, which you see in the top set of bars, and student attendance, which were in the bottom set of bars. So interestingly, this was especially the case for teachers with students in older grades, as can be seen by the differences in the purple bars, sixth through eighth grade students, and in the dark blue bars for the K through third grade students. Next slide, please. So when we asked teachers how they engage students during remote instruction, we found that most reported using online and virtual instruction and fewer sent physical learning resources home. The top bar shows that 83% of teachers reported regularly sending electronic resources via student or parent emails or other online communication. Three-quarters of teachers reported contacting students individually to check in and two-thirds of teachers reported regularly holding virtual office hours and holding virtual classes with their entire classrooms. Fewer teachers reported regularly sending home physical learning resources, such as homework packets or books, and only about one-third reported regularly holding virtual tutoring sessions with small groups or one-on-one. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we know from research about remote instruction is that it's critical to engage and educate students by providing them with direct instruction. So providing students with live and high-quality learning experiences, even when they're not face-to-face in school buildings. But this is incredibly hard to do. And we see from the continuity of learning plans, the district's plans for providing student instruction suggest less direct engagement than will be the case in a typical school day and year. So the graph on the left shows that approximately 44% of districts specified in their plan that students would receive direct instruction, which we defined as instructional activities where students are learning directly from the teacher, including both synchronous and asynchronous activities. This was far more likely to be planned to occur in urban districts and less so in rural districts. Only 9% of plans actually specified the hours of lessons with direct instruction. And of that sample, the average amount of direct instructional time was about 11 hours per week or five to six lessons per week. 16% of plans specified expected time on independent learning and schoolwork, averaging about 12 hours per week. Again, rural districts plan for fewer hours and lessons of direct instruction and district plans outline less instructional time for students in younger grades. Next slide, please. So of course, schools are about more than academic learning and the continuity of learning plans made clear that most districts intended for teachers to have frequent contact with and to provide feedback to students even as buildings were closed. So the green bars in this graph are the proportion of district plans that indicated that teachers would have check-in meetings with students. So nearly all school districts, I think 92%, specified that teachers must regularly connect with students and the far majority did so through teacher check-ins with students or via one-on-one meetings. The dark blue bars show the planned frequency of check-ins, with the far majority of districts planning for weekly check-ins. And the teal bars on the right show that districts plan for check-ins to have multiple uses. Nearly half of plans indicated that teachers were to use check-in meetings as a way of maintaining social connections with their students. And similarly, about half expected teachers to use this time to check on the socio-emotional and mental health of their students. Meetings were also used to provide feedback about student learning. Next slide, please. So a little bit more about feedback on learning activities. Again, this is a critical component of remote instruction. And over 80% of districts that relied primarily on virtual instructional methods specified that they would provide feedback on learning activities. This is shown in the green bar on the left, compared to about 60% of districts that relied primarily on hard copy instructional methods in the blue bars. The kind of feedback provided also varies by urbanicity and the proportion of underrepresented minority students in the district. Next slide, please. An important means of feedback are grades. So we found that districts intended to be very flexible with their final grading policies. About 43% of plans explicitly indicated that at least some students would receive final grades for the year. We're of course sure that more districts had policies than were shown in the plans, but these are the ones that reported about in the initial plan. Of that 43%, about three-quarters of these districts used a binary or categorical grading system, such as pass, no pass, or complete incomplete. About one-third used what we call a no-harm grading policy by which students could not get a lower grade than they had when the school buildings were closed. And 6% of plans said that students could be retained if they did not earn a passing grade. Next slide, please. One of the most critical issues that I think was just addressed in the previous presentation facing districts and schools was how to provide high-quality education and distance learning for special populations of students and in particular for students with IEPs or 504 plans and English learners. Also, given the state's focus on literacy, early literacy, we were concerned about the ability to provide instruction to students who were struggling with literacy in the early years. So in this slide, we compare teachers' reported challenges with continuing to provide supports and services to these populations and to students who were, with accommodations provided in the district's initial continuity of learning plan. So we see that nearly two-thirds of teachers reported challenging, challenges with continuing to provide supports to students with IEPs and 504 plans. And 70% of district plans specified that they are going to accommodate these students. 39% of teachers reported challenges with continuing to provide supports for ELs, whereas only a quarter of continuity of learning plan specified accommodations for these students. Interestingly, about 69% of teachers reported challenges with continuing to provide access to literacy intervention services. And only 4% of plans addressed accommodations for students with what are called reading deficiencies under the Read by Grade 3 law, or kids who had individualized reading intervention plans. Next slide, please. The transition to remote instruction was not easy for educators and I think that's been made fairly evident. So here we look at how districts said in their continuity of learning plans that they would provide PD for teachers and what teachers said they needed in terms of support and PD. We found discrepancies between district's plans to offer professional development and what teachers said they needed. So first, only 27% of districts mentioned distance learning-focused PD for teachers, whereas three-quarters of teachers indicated in the surveys that virtual training resources would be very helpful. Next slide, please. So we asked kind of some specifics about what resources would be helpful to educators to provide remote instruction. And principals and teachers were fairly aligned in what they responded. In particular, over three-quarters of educators wanted models of digital classroom practice, virtual training resources on how to effectively use digital learning strategies, digital platforms that provide learning content, and ready-made lessons to deliver online. This is kind of shown by the dark blue and green bars, again, to the right of the 0% line for the principals and teachers. Next slide. I'm cognizant of time, so the last thing I want to highlight today before closing is the importance of students' mental health and social wellbeing during this pandemic. Both teachers and principals expressed substantial concerns about their students during the spring of 2020. These are just highlighting what I showed at the very top of this presentation. Over 80% of educators were concerned about students missing crucial services and supports while school buildings were closed. And the far majority were concerned with supporting students through their grief and trauma related to COVID-19 and with the long-term impacts, economic impact of the pandemic on our students. Next slide, please. So districts planned to support student wellbeing in a variety of ways. Nearly every single plan, 99.6% of them, specified ways to address students' socio-emotional learning and or mental health needs, including by providing access to psych counselors and other mental health professionals and referrals to outside resources. The plans also indicated that districts would provide students with opportunities to socialize with their peers. They would incorporate socio-emotional, mental health into their curricula and they would provide a directory of community resources or referrals to outside resources. Next slide, please. So I'm happy to talk about what I think the key takeaways are with all of you, but I wanted to kind of hit on five important points first. One of the things that I think is pretty evident in this presentation and in both of the reports that are online is that kids across the state in different kinds of districts received very different treatment, very different education in the spring. And so we need to make sure that we're keeping equity of opportunity at the forefront when we're planning for high-quality instruction in the 2021 school year. Part of doing this is equipping all students with the necessary learning materials to allow them to fully engage in remote instruction, whether that is virtual or hard copy materials. We also need to make sure we're continuing to focus our efforts on both instruction and student support services, particularly for kids in lower achieving or economically disadvantaged districts. We should try to build on the current efforts that districts are doing to provide direct instruction and frequent contact between students and teachers, even if they are not able to be face-to-face in the school building. And part of doing this is expanding access to virtual training and distance learning resources for our teachers and our principals so that they are able to best provide high-quality instruction in whatever format their districts do. I'm going to end there. Next slide, please, Mark. It should be a green Epic slide. And there's the link at the bottom with, where we have it on our website, all these reports and also my own contact information. And I'm of course happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Professor Strunk, for your presentation and for your analysis that preceded the presentation. Board members, questions or comments? I see some faces, but I don't necessarily know if they are accompanied by questions and comments. Dr. Pritchett, a comment?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the report. I had an opportunity not to read it in depth, but to read the entire report. The information is very helpful, especially as we are starting to look at the beginning of this year and some lessons that we need to learn because we know that we are going to be in this situation for several more months. So, but we, those lessons that we're learning, I think, need to be even taken into consideration. Something like, as we had the conversation about the strategic plan this morning, just not until the quote-unquote "end of the pandemic," whenever that happens. Because I think we learned a lot from, you know, we've got an opportunity here to reach students in all sorts of different ways. And this information at least gives us some starting point. So I appreciate the effort that went into it and have found it extremely insightful. You know, you kind of live in your own little world as far as, well, maybe I'm observing this or I'm hearing this from my peers in my own little world. But this kind of put it at a statewide level. So I appreciate the effort that went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Other comments or questions? Comments or questions from board members? Virtual hands or real hands? Dr. Pew, a comment?
Well, probably more of a question. And I know that, I believe that you presented this to the legislative committee and I began to watch this and I had to jump off. So I just wanted to make sure we were responding. So, I just wanted to make sure what the response was.
I'm sorry, I was unable to hear your whole question. It feels like you might have broken up.
Right, it looks like some things are acting goofy here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, I began, I believe that this is the same presentation that was presented to one of the legislative committees, and I was just wondering what the response was to you and Dr. Rice's presentation for the legislature. Did you hear me? No?
Yep, yep, I got that, thank you. This is a similar presentation. It's not the exact same. We didn't have the survey results in the previous presentation to the Senate Education Committee. They didn't have any questions for me, although I think that they were taking time to read it. They didn't have the report in advance. Dr. Rice, did you want to? They had more questions for Dr. Rice's presentation.
Well, and so, Professor Strunk presented on the continuity of learning plan analysis, not the teacher and principal survey analysis. So, the one versus the other. Their, their comment to Dr. Strunk was, wow, this is a lot of information. It's going to take time to go over. So, it is really a rich document, and I think it reflects not only where people were in the spring, but by extension, the springboard off of which they are creating and having approved plans in the summer for the fall. So, it really, it really helps us understand kind of what they're moving from in the, in the spring. But no, we did not get a lot of feedback on Professor Strunk's presentation at the Senate Committee a few weeks ago.
And can we go back to the last slide? And I couldn't locate the slides myself, so I did not get a chance to pull them over. I just wanted to go back to your last point. I just want to make sure that I, that I saw that.
Sure, I think Mark Howe is helping me out with it. So, Mark is on the other side.
Yes, I do see it. So, you know, one of my concerns right now in looking at expanding access to virtual training and distance learning resources for educators is the fact that we're so focused on getting children back into brick and mortar, getting them back into the school buildings, that they, it feels as if we've not put enough emphasis on that last point that, that you're making here. And I don't know if that's necessarily a question for you or, or the department.
I mean, I can jump in and just say, I think it's critical. So, again, teachers were not trained to do this. This is not what they learned in their programs or really even since. And so, if there's any chance that we're going to be teaching virtually any number of days of the week, or many months, it goes on, it's going to be really important to provide high-quality training to the teachers to be able to provide high-quality instruction to their kids.
Right. And so, I guess this, this is maybe where I interject my, my thoughts, you know, on that, on this whole conversation of opening school doors or virtual. And we have schools right now, here in Saginaw at least, I'm, you know, we're getting news that other schools are going to face, are not going to do face-to-face. So, you know, I think that it's unfortunate that there wasn't, and this, this isn't new. Dr. Rice, you and I have had this conversation, that school districts have not had the guidance from a state level. And I do understand that this is something new. I understand that MDE plays a role in this. The Governor's Office plays a role in this, and Department of Health and Human Services plays a role in this. But, you know, just having better guidance. And I think that, that again, it's just, I, I think that most schools should be able to have the opportunity and be encouraged to do just what that last point says, which is to be able to really focus in on that virtual learning piece, because this is new and we did have to rush to do this. And now, we might be right back at where we were before, is again, rushing to figure out how we're going to extend virtual learning to students. And I just wish that there was better guidance on this from, from the state level.
There has been. Dr. Pugh, thank you for sharing that. There's been an enormous amount of guidance that's been offered and an enormous amount of professional development, but there is quite a bit left to provide. If you look at Michigan Virtual, for example, Michigan Virtual provided about 150,000 professional development sessions over the last six months, associated with sketches. About a third of the continuing education credits that were offered within the state were offered by Michigan Virtual on virtual learning. We're a strong partner of Michigan Virtual. We've co-published with Michigan Virtual. We've amplified their work. Michigan Virtual has amplified our work. We've put out guidance as a department in this area. Others have put out guidance from their organizations, MASA, MAISA, MASP, MASSP. But there's no question that there's more to be done. Absolutely no question, but that there is more to be done. It's hard to pivot from an in-person environment to a remote environment, let alone a remote environment with the connectivity and with the computers. So, we acknowledge that there's a lot more to be accomplished, not only within the department, but also within the ed orgs, within the nonprofits, within the ISDs and within the local school districts. I can tell you there's an enormous amount of work that's being done in this area and much more that still needs to be done.
I guess if I could just add, you know, and it's not a finger pointing at all, but, well, I guess I could. The, you know, I think having the pressures of a president and a secretary of education, and now unfortunately, a legislature that's forcing people to go to school, and people are scrambling without the necessary resources or support or guidance to do so, knowing that, and also protecting children and educators and the people who come in contact with each of them. And I just think that it, it has done more harm to put those pressures that are not able to be, again, met, opening doors and keeping children safe. We just saw a report that came out yesterday that 90%, there's a 90% increase in young, in children who, coronavirus cases in children in the, going over the last four weeks. So, I guess except saying that, I just think that the infrastructure has not been there for superintendents, for school districts, for school boards to be able to make decisions that are not under that pressure of you better open or you're not going to get your funding. And I think that there's just a lot of confusion, and I'm just hoping that we here at this state table with the Governor's Office, you and Brandy, who are part of the, the, that, that group that formed, if there's any way that we can help to provide better guidance to districts to be able to put more focus in this area. So, not just for the educators, I guess moving it beyond to make sure that, that, that the local districts have the, where, have all the information as well as the, or relaxed to be able to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you very much for, for sharing that. I will tell you that there are a lot of cross-cutting elements here, and the clarity from the feds is, is certainly insufficient, and it affects what we do in individual states, but also the newness of this. We're learning, we're providing guidance collectively on the fly, and those lessons learned from partners like Professor Strunk and others help us to build better systems for our kids subsequently. Brandy, would you care to share anything on that? Nope, okay, very good. Thank you so much. Other, other comments or questions from board members to Professor Strunk? Other comments or questions? Going once, twice, and thrice? Hearing and seeing none? Dr. Strunk, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
We will see you soon. Thank you.
Take care.
You as well. So, board members, we have completed the presentation on continuity of learning plans and the spring surveys. The next item on today's agenda is approval of standards for the preparation of teachers in middle grades and high school, professional knowledge and skills, English language arts, and mathematics. The standards for the preparation of teachers and professional knowledge and skills, English language arts and mathematics in middle grades, five through nine, and high school, seven through 12, were presented to the State Board of Education during its February 11th meeting and followed by a period of comment through April of 2020. These standards will replace Michigan's current preparation standards for teachers in English and mathematics in grades six through 12. Today, the board is being asked to approve the standards. Pending board approval, technical assistance will be provided by the Office of Educator Excellence to educator preparation institutions on program review and redesign to align to the state standards. Presenters are Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports, and Dr. Sean Kotke, Education Consultant Manager in the Office of Educator Excellence. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you all. I think that intro really covered all of our front matters, so I'm just going to kick it over to Dr. Kotke to take us through the presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Let me share my screen. I hope you're seeing my PowerPoint slide. Yes, okay, good. We'll go ahead and, and get started. Thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to come before you to share the results of public comment on these standards and seek your approval for these documents. So, a little context. Why are we reviewing new teacher preparation standards now? We had certification changes in 2018, and our preparation changes then that accompany that to enable to enact that new certificate structure are ongoing and include today's revised standards. Accompanying this also are placement changes and placement guidance changes. And public comment on those also took place during the time that we had public comment on these standards. That is being summarized to be brought forward at a later date this fall. Some definitions and why it's important to talk this out is some of the public comment conflated preparation and placement and flexibilities. And so, it's good to lay out some of what we're talking about when we talk about these different terms. So, preparation is simply the standards and clinical experiences that comprise an educator's program of study. Certification or licensure is the physical, or in this case, virtual, often, document that demonstrates an educator has met the legal requirements to be an educator and identifies the content areas and grade ranges in which they've been prepared. Placement is our state guidelines that indicate how an educator may be assigned under a valid certificate or license. And flexibilities are additional assignment opportunities under a valid permit authorization or approval for educators who are either certified or uncertified when the ideal candidate is not available. The focus, of course, today is on preparation. Under appropriate placement in the prior staffing system, teachers were appropriately placed when they were teaching solely in the area in which they were prepared, and that endorsement was listed on their certificate. Additional flexibilities were available via our permit system. Under the new staffing system, preparation and certification do not always equal placement and flexibilities, or do not always equal what's possible under placement and flexibilities. Put simply, what's written on the certificate does not comprehensively reflect what a teacher is able to teach. And so, to accompany our cert structure and the standards for each of the grade bands, we developed expanded appropriate placement guidelines with stakeholder input. And part of those guidelines involve placement of teachers, which can occur outside their area of preparation and certification in specific circumstances. There would then be also additional flexibilities available for those placements using our permit system. As noted, public comment on that appropriate placement proposal has closed and will be presented to you later in the season. So, I can shift back to today's focus. We have our standards for the preparation of teachers in middle grades and in high school in their professional knowledge and skills, English language arts, and mathematics. Why are we implementing new standards now? Well, the previous teacher preparation standards in these areas were adopted in 2000 based on stakeholder input and drafting that took place in the five to seven years prior to that. In the meantime, new K-12 standards and assessments were adopted in 2010. So, very simply, our expectations for the preparation of a teacher in English language arts and math are not up to date with the K-12 expectations and assessments. There's a degree of urgency by, set by our state's literacy initiatives. It started with early grades, of course, but then carry forward into the secondary level. And there were legislative allocations for upgrading teacher licensure tests a few years ago, which we need new standards in order to build new tests. We can't just build new tests on old standards. So, these standards represent some key shifts in educator preparation that accompany this new certificate structure. One is contextualized instructional practices are the focus of the standards. It is not a set of topics, just a decontextualized list of content that a teacher must be able to teach, but rather specific practices in the content area that will lead to effective student learning. As I noted, practice and content are much more integrated. As you read through the standards, you don't see lists of topics, but you rather see things teachers should know and then do linked together. There's a strong focus on meeting the needs of individual students in, throughout the sets of standards. And accompanying these, these standards and having been, and presented to the board previously are embedded, ongoing clinical experiences. Now, research shows that focused preparation, grounded in strong clinical experiences, increases new teachers' abilities and their retention. I will note that in, among the public comment, that was a key theme raised by a few commenters, that the more these standards are delivered in an authentic context and field experiences and clinical experiences for candidates, the better candidates will be prepared. So, we've done the PK3 and the 3.6 standards adopted by the board in 2018. And so, now we move to the 5.9 and 7.12 grade bands. And our initial focus here were on three areas, professional knowledge and skills, English language arts, and mathematics. We chose these for several reasons. The professional standards, these address key MDE priorities, especially whole child and social-emotional learning. These are to be paired with all 5.9 and 7.12 endorsement areas to define expectations for foundational coursework that teachers would encounter in a preparation program. And so, we lay that down first. English language arts and math, among the four core content areas, were selected as they address, again, key MDE priorities, especially literacy. The K-12 content standards for both fields were updated in 2010, and that represents these are the least most recent of the four core content areas in these grade bands. The teacher prep standards for both were reviewed and updated last in 2000, which means they were the furthest out of date. And we needed to define a continuum of teacher preparation expectations for the PK12 classroom teacher before building standards for specialist roles in these areas. For example, the reading specialist credential, which has not changed since the year 2000. The timeline for development of these standards proceeds thusly. Core stakeholder writing groups began on each of these dates: October of 2018 for literacy, November 2018 for math, and then January 2019 for the professional knowledge and skills. And the stakeholders met roughly twice monthly throughout the spring of 2019 and in the summer of 2019 also. In all three cases, stakeholders were convened to review existing Michigan teacher preparation standards, K-12 academic standards, and teacher preparation standards from other states and national professional organizations. In all cases, current Michigan teacher preparation standards were deemed insufficient, and it was all groups opted for drafting new standards, incorporating key ideas from multiple sources, as detailed in the introductory remarks to the standards document. These had been shared with external stakeholders for some feedback before our initial presentation to the board. Who participated in this? We had 73 contributors, not including MDE participants. They either worked on the core drafting team or submitted feedback. They include educator preparation provider researchers and faculty members, general and special education teachers, PK12 administrators, ISD consultants, professional association leaders, and parents and child advocates. We presented the standards initially to you in February of this year, and then between February and April solicited public comment. We had 201 stakeholders participate in the public comment survey. Doesn't mean everybody offered a comment, but 201 people did participate in it. Multiple perspectives in order of frequency. We had teachers as our largest population. School administrators are next. Parents, interested citizens, educator preparation faculty, and those identifying themselves as students. These stakeholders had an option to identify where, what schools they represented. And we had 71 different ISDs, local school districts, PSAs, early childhood settings, or colleges and universities identified as represented in the public comment. And 66 different professional educational organizations were identified. These range from state-level organizations in particular content areas, such as Michigan Council Teachers of Mathematics, up to national organizations, which is the National Council of Teachers of English. It was an open response. Candidates, or, I'm sorry, survey respondents could identify as many or as few professional organizations with which they were affiliated. There were two core questions on the test, on the, sorry, on the survey. One, do you agree that the proposed standards for the preparation of teachers in professional knowledge and skills, English language arts and mathematics in middle grades will improve the preparation of teachers in middle grades? 70% agreed with that statement, with only 22% in disagreement. We had the same question for high school standards. So, for the 7.12 standards, 76% indicated they agreed, and 24% did not. Survey respondents were then able to provide open-ended comments on the standards, and a number of key themes emerged from these. The number one theme was support for the standards. More people responded with positive comments about the standards than about any of the other major topics that came up. They praised many specific elements of the standards, including the focus on contextualized instructional practices and understanding the lives of the students that they are teaching. Attention to the needs of English learners was another key area. There were several commenters that felt there was not enough explicit attention to the needs of English learners addressed in the content, addressed in the standards. And so, some changes were implemented to the standards in order to highlight that. Specifically, in the English language arts standards, there were several places where there were implicit references to English learners, and those are made explicit throughout to emphasize the need for an intentional focus on preparing teacher candidates to support this population. Mathematics standards frequently reference all learners, which is intended to be inclusive of English learners, and therefore, changes were not made in the math standards. Teacher preparation programs are, however, advised to increase the curriculum's emphasis in this area. And technical assistance resources will be provided to accompany these standards that further emphasize inclusivity of the term "all learners." That term also pops up in the professional standards, and the stakeholders who drafted the professional standards did not want to unintentionally exclude or give the impression of excluding any population by providing an inventory of several different populations. And so, that is meant to be broadly inclusive. Next theme was implementation and program considerations. So, these really focused in on the standards may not make a difference if they're not implemented well. And the multiple candidates, or multiple respondents had ideas for ways to implement it well, which largely revolved around solid clinical experiences, giving candidates maximum opportunities to work with authentic students in authentic school settings to develop their knowledge and skills in these areas. The balance between content knowledge and pedagogical training was raised in the standards, both some thinking it was a great a great balance between them, and others thinking it erred more on the side of pedagogical training than in defined content knowledge. There were some comments about the emphasis, amount of emphasis on equity and advocacy in the standards. Many of the supporting comments in that first category praised the emphasis on equity and advocacy for students. There were a couple of comments that did not think that the standards went far enough in preparing teachers to be advocates for equitable instruction. And then, there were a couple of comments that did not feel that that was the proper province of teacher preparation, that teacher preparation should be just about the content. But the bulk of comments in this area were in support of what is embedded in the standards. As I referenced earlier, there was concern among some commenters about the impact of narrower grade bands on teacher shortages. Some of those were not really about the 5.9 and 7.12 grade bands, but really focused in on the PK3 and the 3.6. Our response on that is the flexibilities that will be within the appropriate placement proposal should address those concerns. Those concerns were not about the content of the standards. And the last major area of comments was general comments about the need to invest in teacher recruitment, retention, and ongoing professional learning, that that would make a bigger impact on the quality of the teaching workforce than preparation standards. We do not disagree that those things are important. And so, those comments were shared with the other units within the Office of Educator Excellence that focus on recruitment, retention, and professional learning. So, the next steps, provided the board approves the standards today, are technical assistance to our educator preparation providers. We'd kick that off this fall. We anticipate then preparation program review to take place at the very beginning in spring of 2022, and that the first cohorts would enter new programs in the fall of 2023. We anticipate many of them entering as freshmen, and hence, candidates exiting programs in bulk in the spring of 2027, although we know that candidates will probably likely start some of these programs as juniors in the fall of 2023, which would allow them to be exiting the program on an earlier calendar than that. And here is a contact information for the members of the educator preparation team for additional questions regarding these standards. Myself for anything related to English language arts. Dr. Gina Garner for anything related to the professional standards. And Darziya McMahon for questions related to the mathematics standards. Thank you for your time, and that concludes the act of presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Kiesler, Dr. Kotke. If we could, to kick this off, if we could have a motion to approve to begin the discussion.
So moved.
A motion to approve on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. A motion and a second discussion. Discussion from the board. Comments or questions? Certainly, a rich area and a complicated area. And I appreciate the work of the Office of Educator Excellence. This is much more complicated than meets the eye, perhaps initially. There are a lot of moving parts to it, not simply different subject areas, but different grade levels. There are different aspects of the preparation process. And I think this is a remarkably clear presentation, given the complexity involved. So, I appreciate the work that's been, that's been done. Mr. McMillan?
A question. Yeah, I, I think I brought this up back a few months ago when it came before us. But on, in ELA 1G and ELA, it's on the 21st page of the PDF, ELA.2A. References to social justice and wanting teachers to be able to promote social justice are in here. And I guess I'd like to understand what your definite, you know, the makers of this, the definition is. I know that it's quite a touch point for some people as to what it means. So, if we're going to have teachers promoting social justice, I'd like to know what that, what that means.
Sure. Dr. Kiesler, Dr. Kotke?
Yes, certainly. Happy to address that. I can answer it with some reference to a common theme throughout the standards, which is about understanding the backgrounds of all of the students that come to a classroom. So, they're, not just their identity backgrounds, but as race, gender, sexual orientation, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, but also their language status. Their, what are their home languages? What are their outside languages? The curriculum in English language arts, but not exclusively in English language arts, has been historically very narrowly focused and accessible to only a certain profile of student to be successful, that the individual student either conformed to that that norm, or, or didn't, or failed, or worked really hard. And so, the curriculum was very accessible to a limited spectrum of our children. When we talk about social justice in teacher preparation standards, it's about expanding that circle of the curriculum, making it accessible to all of our students, regardless of their backgrounds, regardless of their home languages, in order that they have access to what comes next. So, we're about providing them with, I think, ninth grade. I'm thinking about providing algebra. I'm thinking about geometry for some of our advanced students. I mean, I think about pre-algebra for some of our less advanced students. And if they don't get those foundations, they don't move forward. And it's about expanding that circle of the curriculum in English language arts and also in mathematics to allow all students an equal chance to be successful.
That's fine, but it's not defined here. So, I mean, I just know that it's a loaded term. It can mean redistribution of wealth. It could be the reason why, yeah, I mean, people take from some and give to others. It's a, it's a very loaded term, and I brought it up last time. And also, when we're talking about equitable societies, what exactly that means? I mean, there can be, that can mean good things. That can mean not so good things. If, in order to make things equal, you gotta, you know, take by force from some people and give it to others. So, there's things in here I just have concerns about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other, other comments or questions? Comments or questions? Ms. Fecto, a question.
Just unmuting. Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't have the slides in front of me the whole time, and I was kind of scrambling. So, forgive me if you covered something, and I'm re, you know, rehashing it. But on slide six, there was reference to placement of teachers outside of area of prep and certification. Does that mean that that will be allowed?
Under, under certain circumstances. So, in the appropriate placement proposal, there is an ideal level in which there's a 100% match between the content area and grade levels of a teacher's certificate and the placement in which they're, they're in. But then, what would be, we played with the language, like also appropriate or allowable in certain circumstances in the absence of, say, a teacher who is certified in, say, ELA 5.9, but you need a 10th grade ELA teacher to, and can't find one to allow that person to step outside the strict bounds of their, what's on their certificate, and not incur a penalty. Not as a permanent measure, but as a temporary measure while, whilst searching for or supporting teachers in becoming properly certified in those content areas.
Okay. I, so are there certain parameters? Does this have to be approved by the department?
Yeah, it's, Vanessa, if you'd like to speak to that, it is a proposal that does come to the superintendent's office for approval and then for presentation to the state board at that point.
Okay. Because I'm just remembering when I, when we had the EAA, and I talked to dozens of teachers, and they were certified. I mean, they were, they were like high school teachers, and then they would be going to elementary school. And, you know, special ed teachers would be teaching, you know. It was wildly out of their certification, you know. It was just.
Right.
And then, they could say, oh, all of our teachers are certified, but they weren't properly placed. So, I just, that's, I just don't want to, I want to make sure something like sort of a free-for-all doesn't happen and that it's being monitored to, to make sure that, you know, the kids are getting instruction from who they should be getting instruction from. So, if somebody wanted to cross, like, a whole different content area, that would be allowed, like if they were a math, certified in math, but a different grade, you know. It's not about, they're certified in math. Would they be told they could teach science or social studies? Or is that, would that be allowed?
Um, thank you for the question. So, the appropriate placement.
So the appropriate placement work, as we work through the certification and the standards for educator prep to go along with those certifications, we also have to balance that with being in an era of teacher shortage, a pretty profound teacher shortage in Michigan, and one that is potentially going to be impacted by the current climate. So having some flexibility for districts and educators to meet student needs. So to your point, Ms. Fecto, it's not a free-for-all necessarily. We want to have, like Sean was saying, ideal placement, as well as allowable placement, where you would not need to pull a permit. We also have a pretty robust permitting structure, so districts can ask, can get a permit for teachers to teach a very different content area. There are parameters under which they have to do that, and we know that they're doing it, there's a limit on time, you know. But again, it's, you're finding the heart of the tension between high standards for preparation and certification, deep preparation within narrower grade bands, but the need to be able to fully staff and put certified and prepared educators in front of students. So all these things taken together are meant to balance those competing needs.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I can see going different grade levels maybe, but if it's completely different content area, that raises a flag for me, if they're don't even, if they're not even versed in the content area that they're teaching. But so that's just a thought on that. The other, the other one is on slide eight. Let me go back to it. Which was legally allowed upgrading, oh, so the legislature is requiring, what, stricter testing for teachers to become teachers? Is that what that referenced legislative allocations for upgrading teacher licensure tests?
Good, good question. Thank you. There was an allocation about five years ago for extra money to upgrade the, all of our teacher licensure tests, recognizing that many of them hadn't been updated in quite some time. And we agree that, we had some old test banks and out-of-date tests, but before we could engage in upgrading those tests, we needed to upgrade the standards on which those tests are based, so.
Okay, so I just, I know for a while there, they had some pretty difficult tests, and it was keeping teachers from entering the profession, and I think if they changed, they were modified. The other thing is, in this, in this preparation, you know, I'm just wondering how much, I see there's 600 hours of clinical work, is that what's being recommended or mandated?
Yeah, as part of our clinical experiences requirements, 600 hours across, across the arc of the program, it includes student teaching.
Okay, that's a, that's a one semester, is that, what, my map is off, that's like a half of a quarter, or?
Well, so 600 hours, again, is across the whole program, so you'd have, you have student teaching, but you also have experiences prior to student teaching. And so historically, teacher prep programs didn't necessarily have any clinical experiences prior to student teaching, or very, very limited ones. So what we're actually doing with those is ramping up the expectations leading up to student teaching.
Okay, so this is, okay, pre-teaching, pre, yeah, pre-student teaching. And I'm wondering how much is, in the standards, addresses classroom management, or just working with different students? I know you're saying it's all inclusive, but, you know, there's more inclusion of different kids, of different abilities, or different learners, and if that's part of the, of the standards, if that's addressed in the standards at all, so classroom management, and then, you know, maybe working with kids who are included, who might have an IEP, is that, are the teachers given some direction and, you know, training on that as well?
Yeah, the professional knowledge and skills standards have standards related to creating inclusive learning environments, for understanding, you know, being able to enact students' IEPs. The, and accompanying the standards, if you recall, last, and it's been two years now, we shared core teaching practices. And among the core teaching practices are a number of items that would be classified under the rubric of classroom management. So establishing norms and routines for students, and being able to redirect inappropriate behavior are part of that, too.
Yeah, because from my experience, it's a lot of, it's a big reason why people leave, because they don't know how to manage the classroom.
Sure.
Yeah. I don't know if I should make a remark about social justice, but, you know, maybe I should save that, but let me just say that, you know, we do have redistribution of wealth in this country, and it's going to the top 1%, so we, I guess everybody has a different definition, I get the idea it should be clear what we mean by these terms that we're using. But I think, you know, what kind of ideology it has, but if we just acknowledge the truth of what's happening, and, you know, and realize that when we're teaching, that sometimes the kids on the lower economic spectrum are not there because of any deficiencies for them or their parents, they're just there because they happen to be born into, you know, a community or a legacy of poverty, and we should acknowledge that they're not, it's not that they're not intelligent, it's not that they're not capable, but to understand the socioeconomic, socioeconomic impacts, what it has on people, and not make assumptions about them, and help them to become all they can be, to reach every opportunity they can, and to have a more just society in the process. So I think social justice is fine, but I do think some clarification on what it actually means is probably a good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Mr. Bondano?
So when we talk about teacher shortages and trying to solve the issue of teacher shortages, I know that critical to that will be trying to get teachers from out of state to want to teach in Michigan. So do these standards bring us more or less in line with the preparation and certification standards for other states?
That's, that's a great question, and I would say it's a little of both. So depending on how up-to-date individual states' standards are, these were crafted in very close alignment with national standards, so National Council Teachers of English, National Council Teachers of Mathematics, and American Mathematics Teacher Educators. With those, those teacher preparation standards in the forefront of the work, and states that have upgraded their standards to be more in alignment, or whose standards are always in, well in alignment with those standards, it's going to be, it's going to be fine. The real test will be when the Michigan Test for Teacher Certification, that is based on these standards, debuts, then we will see if somebody prepared in another state is able to demonstrate at least pencil and paper understanding of the material that's embodied in our standards.
Thank you, Mr. Bondano. Other, other questions? Other questions, comments, concerns, fears, phobias, neuroses? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I forgot to mention, or forgot to ask, so 22 to 24% disagreed, is that, that seems high to me, but maybe it's not. Is that generally consistent to when we put out standards?
Thank you for that. It's actually lower. We'd often, we'll often have standard sets where it's more of a 60-40 split, or a 55-45 split, or even 70-30, so when they're, you know, close, when it's only about a quarter. And then the question was about the, you know, if you agreed whether these standards would improve the preparation of these. And so there were a number of reasons why somebody selected no. Very, very, very few were because they thought the standards were not good standards. The majority of those who said no said things like, well, it depends on whether the program has good clinical experiences. Standards won't fix anything. It's small, small grade bands will make things bad for us. So they were not, not in this space of having fundamental disagreements with the content of the standards.
Okay. I mean, other than social studies, I don't recall anything. If you could send me four examples of four or five that had 55-45 or 60-40 in the next few days, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other board members, comments or questions or concerns? Remember that standard setting is different from the hiring process. It's the standard setting within your teacher prep programs. It's what happens with our young people in the teacher prep programs. They come out, they're certified, they are certified, and that is itself slightly different from the, the area of the possible in which you can teach. There's a little bit more flexibility than has historically been the case, and that greater flexibility is in fact a function of a teacher shortage. But that's not in a fully elastic flexibility. It doesn't permit you, as a rule, to use your five-year certification to go teach in a completely different subject. It permits you to teach a little bit out of a grade range, but not in a completely different subject. The latter case would only be in an extraordinary circumstance, when a district was unable to get a certified teacher in a given area, and then at that point, that school district is permitted to hire somebody as a long-term sub, or on a one-year permit to address that teaching position outside of certification. But that is unrelated to the circumstance that we are discussing here. Other questions or comments? Fears or phobias? Hearing none, seeing none? If we could have a roll call vote, please. Marilyn?
Yes. Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly? Yes. Tiffany is saying yes. Albrecht? Passes 6-2.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. We will, we have Marty Ackley, our Director of Public and Governmental Affairs, who will lead the state and federal legislative update, and most importantly, our chairperson, Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, will, will kick us off, I believe. Ms. Ramos Montini?
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you. As the legislative chair of this committee, we're here to report to you that because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to meet and formulate any, well, many different legislative items. However, because of school opening, now we have something very important in our hands that we would like to report on today. Now, as I said, I'm the chair of the committee, the legislative committee. Dr. Judy Pritchett is the co-chair, and the Honorable Nikki Snyder is a member of the committee. Our liaisons are Marty Ackley, Caroline Latham, Stephen DeGrove, and our beloved Marilyn Snyder. And our special guest at this last meeting was our superintendent, Michael Rice. We met on Tuesday, July 28, from 1:00 to 2:00. So at this time, I would like to refer the floor to Marty Ackley, and we're going to start by informing you some items on returning to school. Marty?
You're on mute, Marty.
Marty, you need to unmute.
There we go, I'm sorry. So I'll be brief, as the sun is nearly setting here today. We did have a robust discussion on July 28, as Ms. Ramos Montini said. We discussed the governor's, at that time, her executive order 202142, return to school, and the return to school roadmap. We also discussed, as Dr. Rice really went into deep explanation this morning about the issues of days and hours and attendance and enrollment, as well as state assessments, he discussed that, as well as a package of bills, House bills that are going through the legislature right now, House bills 4910 through 4913, and they have passed the House, they've come out of the Senate Education Committee, and they're on the Senate floor. The governor's office is in negotiations with the legislature, as Dr. Rice mentioned today, and the Senate actually is coming in on a rare Saturday session, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., to hopefully, expectedly, take up this legislation, and negotiated package of bills to get to returning to school. And the House is coming in on a rare Monday session recently, Monday morning, to finish up what the Senate is expected to do on Saturday. We also discussed briefly the state budget shortfalls, and how the legislature and Governor Whitmer reconciled the closing of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. The discussions are still ongoing for the next fiscal year budgets, which begins October 1, that's fiscal year 2021. And then, as Dr. Rice discussed this morning, the federal funding is still up in the air, and he is urging Congress to, again, come through for states, including Michigan, on needed funding. So other than that, I mean, that was a pretty thorough discussion, and Dr. Rice went over that in depth this morning. And if there's anything else you want to add, Dr. Rice?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. So let's just, any questions?
Judy, do you have anything to add to the report?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Nikki?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that, okay, question, Dr. Rice? Tom has a question.
Yeah, I guess I'm, and I know we already talked about it once, but the 5913, I just, Marty, when it was going through the House Committee, I actually tried to get it amended. I mean, one of, a state rep that I know, I was encouraging and trying to get them to really not allow the benchmarking test to go to the state at all. I mean, I don't, I still don't really understand why the state needs it, and I'm just concerned that it's going to be used for things that it is not designed for, and I just don't, you know, I just don't, I don't, I would rather it not be sent to the state. And so I just, I don't know, is there any movement in something like that, Marty? I mean, or is that a pretty, I don't know, I just, I'd like to, I'd like the board to take a stand that we would oppose such a move.
Yeah, I personally am not involved in those discussions, so I can't attest to whether a so I can't attest to whether assessments is a key part of those discussions of that package. I know that days and hours and attendance and enrollment are, assessments may be. I'm not sure if Brandy Johnson is on the call still, if she has any insight, but I'm not sure.
I am on the call. I wouldn't disagree with anything you said, Marty. I would say that the, what we have been discussing, the scope is very narrow to address the issues that are most urgently needed to address to start the school year.
Okay, so Brandy, the governor isn't necessarily pushing for the benchmarking to come to the state? I mean, that would be, that would be good, in my view, if she wasn't.
Um, I think I'd like to respect the process with the legislature and let it play out. But I think you'll hear more about this probably even tomorrow.
Okay.
And certainly by Saturday, at the latest.
But if I could, Brandy, is it, is it fair to say, just to reiterate what you said, that you had four House bills that passed the House, House bills 5910, 11, 12, and 13? And they had a wide range of elements within them? And the governor and the governor's team have expressed an interest in really a very, very, very narrow swath of those elements related to what is necessary to get the school year begun? And not a wide-ranging set of initiatives that would really be sea changes in the midst of a pandemic? Is that fair?
That is fair. And also, I mean, part of the narrowness of that scope is really focusing on just this upcoming school year, rather than making more permanent changes that would, you know, that would have, that would be more permanent into future school years, presumably not in the context of a pandemic.
Right. So 5910 through 5913 were, represented a wide range of changes, or a wide range of proposed changes. And there is an effort within negotiation to be much narrower in focus. Okay.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Albrecht has a question?
I think Michelle.
I think it's, I think it's Ms. Fecto and then President Albrecht.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of things I wanted to say. One was, again, I do, as far as holding enrollment, as, you know, not doing the count day this year, using last year's numbers, does that look like something that might move, Marty, or no? Is there a resistance to that, or is there, you would expect that to pass, or what do you think?
Again, Michelle, I'm not intimately involved in the negotiations on that. I'm not sure if Brandy has any insight that she is at liberty to share.
I'm just not at liberty to share right at this very second, but, but I think there will be clarity on that issue for Saturday's session.
Yeah, well, I would strongly urge you to suspend those, the count day, because it's, on behalf of all of the teachers and administrators that have told me that that would be great. So I just wanted to make that statement. The other is, I wanted to support what Tom just said about the benchmark assessments. I just don't see the point, given COVID, and how it would be administered. I don't trust the, some of the folks that will, might want to use this as some sort of a comparable benchmark assessment data. It's, I don't think it's a comparable, I don't think it's going to be, the data's going to be strong enough. And the focus so much on assessments, and, all right, so this is, as a parent and an advocate around special ed, is, you know, I have found that these types of assessments are to the detriment of certain populations, because what happens is it becomes a focus on just getting test scores, or having good test scores and prepping for test scores, and/or, you know, and then it's used to say a school has failed somehow, when this data is not really valid. And even if it's not being used, as we did with Race to the Top and No Child Left Behind, I still think there's a danger to using it, especially when the data is not, is just so questionable. And I think the teachers, administrators have enough to do, and they can use those assessments internally, but I just don't see the point of using them and holding them up as being anything close to fair or valid under the conditions. And, and the, you know, the flip side is, if there's this focus on, on testing, it often leaves certain people who don't test very well, you know, in a bad spot. And so I would encourage not using them, not collecting them, letting the schools use them to provide instruction and to see where they need to improve. But I just don't think they're, collectively, they're meaningful in any way and can be potentially harmful.
Thank you. Dr. Albrecht, and then Dr. Pritchett.
So I just have to say that, you know, this is, and this isn't just now. This is a long time coming, but this pandemic, I think, has really shone a light on the fact that this board is not respected. And Brandy, I appreciate the fact that you say that there's going to be clarity come Saturday, but come Saturday, the whole thing's done. So as the president of this board, I'm offended that we are not included in conversations to a greater extent. And on behalf of this board, I hope that you can take this back to the process that you guys engage in, because I'm offended. And, and I don't like being told that I will find out after the fact, after the whole negotiations are done, that we will then get to find out what's actually in the bill and what's going to be decided on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Albrecht. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I certainly concur with Dr. Albrecht's remarks. It is extremely frustrating as a board member to not be part of the process, at least to be able to give our feedback, because we are state-elected officials also. I also want to voice my concurrence with Mr. McMillan and with Ms. Fecto right now. As, as we get closer to school opening, whatever date that's going to be for local districts, what I am observing across the state is they are so focused on how are we going to open, how are we going to keep our students safe, how are we going to meet the needs of our families? And I do believe that many of them will do some benchmark testing if they're able to, if their students are able to come to school, enter building, and teachers are able to be able to administer those benchmark assessments. And while it would be good to have that data, because I think the benchmark assessments are important data for us to be able to look at, I think this is not the year to do it. There is just too many other pressures on our local districts. And so hopefully, that can be one of the compromises. I know the House voted the whole package over, I understand how legislation works, and the negotiations that are probably going on behind the scenes. But if anybody is listening to us at all, that would be my feedback at this point. The moment, the days, the hours, those are the important issues. Those are the questions that districts need answered, and they need answered pretty quickly at this point. And they will do what is right by the kids. They know how to instruct. They know how to open school and take care of their students in whatever mode they have decided they need to do that. They don't need an added, oh, we've got to get this done because we have to report it somewhere at this point. At some point, I do believe that that data will be important. But again, the more I've been able to reflect, especially the last week or so, watching schools try to open and make those decisions, and I've seen some districts make one decision one day, and they have to change that decision three or four days later because of community data that they're getting. I just don't want that added to them at this point. We need to answer the important questions for them right now. And those are the ones that have already been talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pew, and then it appears Ms. Fecto again.
Actually, the board members haven't left much more for me to say. I guess I would just ask that if, you know, if, if there's a motion that we need to make, or if there's anything that, or statement that we could make that, that would support what, what we are saying here. I mean, I think, as what was just said by Dr. Pritchett, the schools know that they're going to be measuring deficit, they're going to be measuring trauma, and the other unfortunate things that children are experiencing right now. So I would have to agree with the approach that, that my fellow board members are taking thus far.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fecto, and then Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just wanted to support Cassandra. I think it's important, as an elected member, she's served for many years now. I think she's going on, what, number 10 or 12 years as on the board, and has been dedicated and worked really hard, has really immersed herself in all these issues. To include her in these conversations, I know the governor wants to be inclusive of all voices. She has a quadrant, but I think it's, it's missing a great resource, and it would connect the board in these decisions. And I just think it's, it's just a missed opportunity not to include the board president in these conversations. So I encourage you to, as soon as possible, include Cassandra as a valuable resource in education policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Mr. McMillan? Mr. McMillan, I believe for the first time today, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I don't want to get ahead of anybody else, but at the proper time, I'd like to make a motion, just, you know, solidifying or memorializing this idea that we, as a board, oppose the benchmark assessment data that's contemplated in House Bill 5913 being submitted to the state.
Okay, so that's a motion. Do I have a second? I have a support from Dr. Pew in the chat. Any discussion? If we could have a roll call vote, Marilyn?
Yes. Fecto? Could you please repeat what we're voting on? So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. The Michigan State Board of Education opposes benchmark assessment data related to House Bill 5913 being submitted to the state legislature, right, Tom?
Well, to the, and Michigan Department of Education, or any, any department of the state. I'm, I'm open to wordsmithing. I just, whatever it is, I don't want the locals to be required to send this data to the state, and then for the state to use it in what, you know, whatever way that they'd want to. I just don't want it. I don't think it's necessary.
I vote yes.
Okay. McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes. Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, eight, zero passes.
Okay.
And I know that it could end up being put in some Senate bill, but I think the, you know, Marty, you and Dr. Rice understand the intent of what the motion. Whatever, wherever it goes in the next week, you know, I think we oppose it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, that is the report of State and Federal Legislative Committee. Ms. Tilly, do you have a report on NASB? I'm getting in the chat. No, I do not. Very good. Thank you very much for, for sharing that. Any board member comments? We're nearing the end of the meeting. Comments by state board members? Dr. Pew, a question?
Yeah, I guess the question kind of overlaps here, and it just, it goes back to, it can go in comments. I'm not sure if it would go in, in the legislative discussion. But I wasn't quite sure here how we were, you know, if the topic of, you know, returning to school was going to come up and get into, you know, these decisions that are being made. But I just want to, you know, make sure that, that it be known that, I think it was on July 22nd, that I did a press event and talked about the, some of the environmental, the risk of exposure and various exposure risks. And so I just don't want that to pass us by, because there were some very important materials that were provided. We had Clara Barnett from National School of Safe School Network. And then we also just had a presentation by Sonia Poncy from ASHRAD. And so I just want to make sure that we are able to, as a board, talk about how these other factors are considered as schools are thinking about opening. You know, myself, I don't think that schools are considering this in their, their return plans, because it's, it just was not something that, that they were thinking about. I do think that the guidance that they're given, as I mentioned earlier, has been hodgepodge, and it's, and it's going to impact our teachers, our, our families, and our children. And so I just want to know, how do we influence the decisions that are being made, being that we're the State Board of Education? And I too, I support what was said by Cassandra as our president, that she be a part of, of the various discussions. But, you know, making sure that, that we're able to give input there. I mean, I think that that's a huge, we're hearing a lot. We know that, that the schools are not prepared in this area. And so I guess that's a question that I have. Maybe I should have added it to, you know, to that legislative discussion. I was trying to get in before that closed out, because it's not just a comment, it is a question. And then hoping that we are able to, at least, at the very least, be providing school districts with access to people who can guide them on how to address their buildings and making sure that they're reducing the exposure risk. The other question that I'll just have is, is in the plan that was provided, the Safe Schools roadmap, from what I understand, that there wasn't really facilities people that were a part of that discussion. So I guess those are questions that I have.
Thank you very much. Other board members? Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of the teachers, administrators, school board members, community parents, who are struggling and working so hard to ensure that kids are getting what they need. These are just such incredibly difficult times, and I know people are working really hard to make the right decisions. And, and I just wanted to voice my appreciation and support for all those efforts. And I wish everyone well the start of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Other, other questions or comments? Dr. Pew, did you get your ore fully in the water? You're, you're on mute.
I did. I was just trying to make sure that, that, that those were, that it was known that those were two questions. The one about the facilities, is there facilities guidance that was provided? The Safe Schools roadmap, that task force that produced that report? And then number two, is there, you know, how do we make sure that these other environmental exposures are addressed? And then how do we make sure that, that districts are getting, are having And then how do we make sure that, that districts are getting, are having access to appropriate information? And I was referring to some of the reports that have been put out by the Safe Schools Network as well as our, the person who provided comment through the engineer, the, the Heating, Air Conditioning and Refrigeration Engineers Association.
So Brandy, do you, do you want to take any part of that?
Sure. So the roadmap does have second sections related to operations and facilities. We also have an operations and facilities subcommittee of the advisory council, which includes representatives from things like transportation, experts. They have created some new recommendations. Today, I actually suggested that that subcommittee work directly with MDE on developing some additional guidance, particularly as it relates to transportation. And in addition, we had a call last week with Eagle about developing some guidance as it relates to air quality in schools. Dr. Brandy Brown is working on that. I expect that I'll have her draft guidance within the next couple of days and then we can distribute it and certainly send it to Superintendent Rice to distribute as well. Eagle has also developed some guidance related to wa, water and the importance of flushing water, given that schools have, buildings have been closed for so long. And so that has been distributed via Eagle as well. I hope that the Department of Education is open to the advisory council providing input into the types of guidance that they're also hearing that is needed. And I know that they would be willing to help the department co-develop that additional guidance if appropriate.
So can I, can I just ask a couple more questions, Dr. Rice?
Please.
Okay, so first, I just want to make sure that you, that you did receive the report and the information that, that I sent on the report because it does include all of that. And then my, my, I wanted to just be on the record and say that, you know, this, this type of information came post the recommendations that were put in the roadmap. And so I am against schools opening without having that guidance and being able to provide those necessary supports in the schools and making those, especially as it relates to ventilation. So I just want to make that known. I don't know how, you know, how as a board, we would move forward and address that as a, as a board, but as a board member, I have been speaking about that. And I wanted to make sure I would bring that information to the department as well as to the governor's office and the Department of Health and Human Services. And good to hear that Eagle was a part of the discussions now too.
We are in fairly constant contact with MDHHS. We met yesterday. We've had other meetings, we've co-authored publications. But the Department of Health and Human Services is first and foremost responsible for, for health. MDE is not going to, will not have the requisite expertise to serve in that capacity. It is the Department of Health and Human Services that is responsible for public health in the state. And we appreciate the partnership with the department and will continue to work with it, but will be guided by the department and not the other way around. Just wanted to, to be clear on that. Mr. McMillan and then Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, just going back to what I talked about with regard to education pods, and I do appreciate, Dr. Rice, you being willing to talk to the administration in the areas because I really, I don't see a lot of focus and, and maybe I'm missing it, but, you know, on parents and the conundrum that they are being put under. And I don't think it's suburban, I think it's only, I think it's urban, suburban, rural, I think it's everywhere. Tens of thousands of families are just in flux over what to do. And so I, I think, you know, whatever barriers need to be knocked down to provide as much creativity and flexibility. And I understand doing it anyway, whether the law allows it or not, is one way of doing it. But I, I just know that there, you know, when you have a house where 10 kids are coming in and out of, neighbors might talk and they might say, what's going on? And it'd be nice for the person to say, well, I mean, I, I know that this is legal, it's okay, you know? And so I just, you know, I just think that it would be, it would be something, we just, there needs to be a focus on, on helping parents and especially in the next few weeks as we're trying to, as they're trying to scramble. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. And then Ms. Snyder for a comment, Dr. Pugh for a question.
I just wanted to echo Michelle, Michelle's comments about just saying thank you to parents for staying engaged and teachers and everybody who's doing the best that they can do given the situation. And I think that's important for us to be sending that message, please stay engaged the very best you can, whatever way it works best for you. But just to go back to that access and opportunity discussion at the beginning of the meeting, I really sense that that needs to be one of the issues that, that is on our agenda for the next meeting. Really fully defining the current digital divide and connectivity divide, by the late fall, we should have a very solid handle on whether or not that is an issue to accessing remote learning. And as we continue to talk about each subject that we move forward with, that we are applying it to the here and now the very best we can, I think it would be great to get something up and running like we did with the childcare for the frontline workers, which is, I, I think it's kind of like a, an immediate issue that we could, we could address within the department. And I think that's particularly, there was a moment when we talked about the setting that we're all in together being particularly demotivating to some degree for many, many kids. I think sometimes when we talk about assessments, it makes us, you know, the, the sense of, this is an invalid assessment of my current capacity or it is an assessment of your current capacity, how does that translate to your future? I continue to say frequently that if we acknowledge the gap in a way that is the most positive, we can consider it an opportunity to grow. So even as it continues to grow itself, whatever way we can be highly engaged to minimize it for now is, is the biggest thing that I'll probably continue to say.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
My question is, I just want to make sure that that's clear because we do have schools opening now, we have guidance that has come post these schools starting to open, some of the schools in the worst shape. Are these schools going to have this information as it relates to their risk of exposure prior to them opening? Can we make sure that we, as a department, get districts the information to folks like Ms. Poncy or others who might be able to provide them guidance? Maybe even, you know, I have talked to local folks, health departments may be able to provide guidance. Of course, when we talk about pathogens and viruses and exposure in that way, it's a little bit, an infectious disease, that it gets more complicated. So I'm just making sure that I'm saying that yes, Department of Health and Human Services is good, that we have a great relationship with them. But the Department of Education wants to make sure that, that, that children are able to be in school buildings where they can learn and not become, with a threat of, of being physically ill as well as their educators. You know, one of the CDC's top, one of their mainest focus points was making sure that children and teachers could be protected. And I'm just trying to make sure that that is the case if a lot of the information that we're talking about, that ensures that, came post some of the guidance. And I know schools are focused on so many different things that, that it's not about the environment, some of the environmental factors that we're talking about here. So I just want to make sure that I, I'm clear on that and that, that I'm getting that out and that we're giving them the, the tools that they need.
What, what would you have distributed?
There's, there are some toolkits and there are, and, and now that I'm, that, that Brandy has just mentioned, what she mentioned, I just want to make sure that, that, that they have that toolkit that, that I, I think I provide, that was provided. Maybe there's a link to it in, in the materials that I sent over. And then making sure that they have the contact information for, for ASHRAE, just in case they, they need those, which, which is the American Society of Engineers in HVAC. So those are two things that I, that I would provide. And of course, they probably, hopefully are having conversations with their health departments.
Okay, thank you. We, we have a meeting set up with Dr. Poncy and we also have the, the information. I'll be talking to our deputy superintendent for finance and operations, Mr. Garant, in about eight minutes, just as soon as this meeting's over. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing and hearing none. Future meetings are Tuesday, September 8th, Tuesday, October 13th, Tuesday, November 10th, and Tuesday, November 8th, all at 9:30. And at least for the moment, all to be held virtually. If there are topics that board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn or me. The time is now 3:48. Have a great day. Thank you.